Good evening and welcome. It is March 16th, 2021. This is our second regular city commission meeting for March at 7:00 PM. And we are somewhat socially distanced in commission chambers. I'll call the meeting to order at this time, and I'd like to introduce the folks that are in front of you and also hope you felt welcomed by our utilities manager, Tim Heyrend, and information technology manager Ned Huta, who served as our greeters tonight. The folks that are up in front of you are our recording secretary Cassidy Ritz, assistant city clerk Wendy Hauntz. From Zone 1, Commissioner Dwight Selby. From Zone 2, Commissioner Troy Kent.
Hey, everybody.
Our deputy mayor in Zone 3, Commissioner Susan Persis.
Hi, everybody.
And then from Zone 4, Commissioner Rob Littleton. Also, we have our city manager Joyce Shanahan, assistant city manager Claire Whitley, and city attorney Randy Hayes. For those of you listening online, I'm Mayor Bill Partington. At this time, if you would, please double check to make sure that your cell phones are silenced. I always say that, and then somebody's phone always goes off. Prior mayors have required that person to buy pizza. I haven't been that harsh, but if you would, just double check. And we'll rise for the invocation given by Pastor Kevin Mahoney from Reamah Ridge Baptist Church, and that'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for the opportunity to be here tonight to discuss and decide the things concerning our great town of Orman Beach. We lift up our mayor, our commissioners, and all that here present tonight. Lord, give each one, fill each one with discernment, calmness, and, Lord, the things that come up in the meeting tonight will enhance the future of our great city. Lord, help us tonight again to realize how blessed we are. Lord, we lift up our police, our first responders, our military, keep each one of them safe, and we give you all the glory and praise and Christ's name.
Pledge of Allegiance.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we move to 4A, and we are excited to recognize one of our own. Our public information officer Jen Elston was one of the News Journal's 40 Under 40 Award winners. And so Jen, if you'll come up, we've got a certificate to present to you. Forty Under Forty honors 40 young professionals in Volusia and Flagler Counties who are deserving of recognition for both professional achievement as well as volunteering to make their communities a better place to live and work. Jen Elston was among those honored this year, and she's definitely
Yay.
Definitely a winner, definitely a winner in our minds. We know she's great, and we want to congratulate her, give her some special recognition. Jen, let's get a picture with the commission behind you.
I'm always on the other side.
Yeah, you're the one. You're just gonna do that. You're normally doing that. It's time. Awesome. Thank you. And Joyce, I don't know who you're gonna assign to do all the social media and make the press release on that one. There you go. Will she do it? That's the question. I guess if it's an order. Now, we have a surprise proclamation, which this doesn't happen every day. But I'll ask Colby Salento to come forward and be recognized. And Colby, if there's anybody you want to bring up with you, you're gonna get
Taylor, I'm gonna make you come up here.
Some flowers.
Well, you're gonna make me fantastic.
All right. Let me read.
I am nothing without them.
Awesome. Let me read this proclamation that your coworkers put together for you. They had some special insights. Whereas, Colby J. Salento was born and raised locally in Volusia County, attending all undergraduate schools in New Smyrna Beach. After high school graduation, Colby worked for a few hotels, a management company, and a law firm. In December 2011, Colby was hired by the City of Orman Beach as an office assistant. After managing all aspects of the city commission meetings and the city's website for a few years, Colby was promoted to assistant city clerk. In that position, Colby gained experience in almost every area of the city clerk's office. And whereas Colby attended Santa Fe Community College in Gainesville and Daytona State College in Daytona Beach before earning her political science degree from the University of Central Florida in 2018, Colby received approval from UCF in late 2017 to take a higher workload of classes and decided to leave the City of Orman Beach in order to concentrate solely on school. And whereas, in April of 2019, Colby returned to the City of Orman Beach in the position of city clerk. She worked hard to establish an efficient and cohesive team while always displaying a positive and service-oriented approach to both the public and the commission and staff. Colby trained, explained, assisted, and answered questions, freely giving her institutional knowledge from years of experience. Through her years of municipal service, Colby has touched many lives. And whereas Colby loves animals and proudly shows off photos of her cats, Sophia and Simon, she's a passionate University of Florida football fan, Go Gators, often conversing about college football with others. Baking is a forte for Colby, sharing her cakes, cookies, brownies, and pastry creations with staff and family. Another little-known fact beyond her coworkers is that Colby loved creating games each holiday season, and her excitement for this time of year is unmatched. And whereas, Colby's dream is to become a librarian, and school became part of her life once more, she started her master's degree in library science from Indiana University and would give updates on her classes and projects to anyone who asked. She is leaving the City of Orman Beach again to pursue her dream, and we'd like to thank her for her many contributions during her almost decade-long tenure here and wish her the best in all her endeavors, with the hope that she will keep in touch with her Orman Beach family and friends. Now therefore, I, Bill Partington, Mayor of the City of Orman Beach, Florida, on behalf of the entire commission, and our city manager, and all staff, do hereby proclaim March 16th, 2021, as a day to recognize Colby J. Salento in the City of Orman Beach and encourage our residents to join me in a Go Gators and in wishing Colby Salento the best in her future endeavors. Congratulations, Colby.
Yay.
We're gonna miss you. And Colby's mom is here, which is a surprise.
Oh, my God, I can't believe it. Give him the pictures, yeah. Got it, yeah.
There's more.
Oh, there's more.
Just a little more.
Oh, thank you.
We're gonna present, Colby, for all her dedicated service to the city, she was a true leader, working with a lot of different people on our staff and in the community. And sometimes she had difficult assignments, but she always handled them well. The definition of a servant leader is basically what Colby did. She didn't keep knowledge to herself, she shared it with everybody, trained everybody. And so, in recognition of that, along with the proclamation, wanted to present her with a key to the city. Congratulations.
Yay.
Thank you. We're gonna miss you. For audience remarks, tonight, we have, we'll start with Susan Harrell. She's still here? Susan? If not, we'll move to Jane Quarkham.
I'm here to talk about Riverbend Golf Course, and just to let you know that that has been a real lifesaver, especially during this last year, where that was pretty much the only outdoor activity that was available. It just really was a lifesaver. And it's a beautiful course, you can always see hawks and fox and all kinds of other little critters running around, and it's just really relaxing and a very beautiful, beautiful space. There's a lot of people here tonight who have come to, you know, also support that we hope that Riverbend can stay open. We recognize that there are things that are probably very expensive to fix, like the overpass on, over Airport Road, that there's a bridge that goes from the clubhouse to the starter shack. But if we kept it open as a nine-hole course on the back nine, there would not be those issues, and those, I think, are where a lot of the expense falls. So, we're really, you know, we played at Tamoka Oaks, that closed, played at Riverbend, that closed. I know Indigo has closed, and I know that golf isn't exactly, you know, a huge money-making sport, but it is a great sport, and visitors, people who rent here, come down for vacation, they also like to play golf, and so it's not just residents. But I just would ask that you consider possibly keeping it as a nine-hole course, because we recognize that expense is something that we need to consider. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And next is Travis Sargent.
Good evening, Mayor. City Commissioner Travis Sargent, 406 North Peach Street. Recently, I met with an attorney regarding the Osceola-Ortona merger. He advised me that the school board could just hold a proper meeting and vote again, and that would cure the potential sunshine law violation. And with the previous vote being four to one, it was unlikely anything would change. On the sales tax issue, he did not see an issue. The board is not bound by recommendations from the citizens committee. Neither the 2017 extension by referendum of the half-cent sales tax nor the citizens committee act or otherwise operate to bar the school board from voting to close a school. Since no ad valorem taxes are being used, there is no need for a separate bond referendum. It was our elected school board representative that wanted a K-8 on the beachside. This is the reason why the conversation of merging the schools came up. This would not have happened, or this was not the will of the people. If this was never brought up, we would be getting Osceola remodeled, and Daytona would be getting Ortona remodeled, as per the original plan. I'm not sure why the school board representative was not in communication with the commission after the August 25th vote to choose the Ortona site to build the new school. It was a lack of communication that ultimately led us too late to the fight. With all this being said, I hope the city commission can have better communication with all elected officials in the area to prevent this from happening in the future. The focus needs to change from, excuse me, the focus needs to change from passing feel-good ordinances like the educational single-use plastic ordinance and focus on bigger issues like saving our community school. Thank you.
Thank you, Travis. And I'll give one last chance for Susan Harrell. All right. At this time, we will go to agenda item number six, approval of minutes. The minutes have been sent to the commission for review and posted to the city's website. Any additions, deletions, or corrections, commission? These are the March 2nd, 2021, regular city commission meeting minutes.
I move approval of the minutes from the city commission meeting on March 2nd, 2021.
Second.
Thank you, commissioners. Moved by Persis, seconded by Littleton. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, and the minutes will pass unanimously. The following item, agenda item number seven, is a community redevelopment item. The city commission serves as the community redevelopment agency of the city and must review these items and make a recommendation as the CRA. Therefore, at this time, we will recess the city commission meeting and call the CRA meeting to order. As chairman of the CRA, I'll open the public hearings and ask the secretary to read the title, Resolution Number 2021-56.
Resolution Number 2021-56, a resolution of the city commission, also acting as the community redevelopment agency of the City of Orman Beach, Florida, accepting a bid from Chinchor Electric, Inc., to provide construction services for the banner pole replacement project under bid 2021-10, authorizing the execution of a contract and payment therefore, and setting forth an effective date. This is Resolution Number 2021-56, read by title only.
Thank you, Madam Secretary, and I do not have any cards for 7A.
I would recommend approval to the city commission, the staff's recommendation with the contract amount of $94,248 for this project to go forward.
Second that?
All right. I'll let you score that one. And any other discussion on this item? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Hearing none, we'll show that passing unanimously. We'll close the public hearings and reconvene the city commission meeting at this time. And we are on the consent agenda. Does any member of the commission wish to pull any agenda items from the consent agenda?
Mayor, I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
Moved and seconded, thank you. Madam Clerk, if you would, please call the roll.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. Does any member of the commission wish to comment on any consent agenda item? Not, we will move to 9A. I will open the public hearings and ask the clerk to read the ordinance by title.
Ordinance Number 2021-10, an ordinance amending the future land use element of the comprehensive plan of the City of Orman Beach by amending the future land use map to change the designation of 2.81 plus or minus acres of real property located at 1190 West Granada Boulevard from open space/conservation to medium-density residential, providing for conflict, authorizing transmittal, and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance Number 2021-10, read by title only.
Thank you, Wendy, and I'll ask our planning director, Stephen Spraker, to speak on this item.
Good evening. My name is Stephen Spraker, planning director with the city. This is a comprehensive plan amendment for the property at 1190 West Granada Boulevard. The property for any future development has three distinctive steps. The step that we are in right now is the comprehensive plan amendment. There was an application, it was reviewed by the planning board, who made a recommendation, and tonight's meeting is from the city commission for action, and if approved, it would go April 6th, again, for second reading. If approved, it would be transmitted to the Department of Economic Opportunity, the state agency, and the Volusia County Growth Management Commission. The second part is the zoning map amendment, which would follow the comprehensive plan amendment. And then the third action is the site plan. That would be reviewed by the site plan review committee. It would include a neighborhood meeting, and it would come back to the city commission and the planning board in the form of a plat. The comprehensive plan is the guiding document for the city, includes the goals, policies, objectives of future development, and includes the density and intensities allowed under the land use. It provides a framework for the land use amendment, so it doesn't get, there's no specific site plan, there's no landscape plan, I can't tell you the dimensions of the future development, but basically it provides the framework of the uses. As part of the process, staff receive three forms of communication in your packet. There is a letter from residents of Sagebrush Trails in opposition of this land use amendment. There's also an email from Ms. Connie Colby, who also was in opposition. And finally, Mr. Moore contacted city staff, doesn't have access to a computer, and wanted to relay his concerns and objections to this project. So, the land use map is shown in the picture above. This would be West Granada Boulevard here, Sagebrush Trail is located here. The subject property is the green open space conservation. The application seeks to go from that open space conservation to the medium-density residential, which is abutting it to the east, which is part of the Trail South 40. Further east is the open space conservation, where the stormwater pond for that project exists. And then to the north exists residential office retail for the commercial and office uses along Granada and Sagebrush Trail. And then to the south is both Spring Meadows and Chelsea Place Common Area. An important point about the open space conservation, it can take many forms. It could be a wetland that's connected to the Tamoka River. It can be a stormwater pond that is part of an overall development, or it can be a park like Casson or Rockefeller Park. So there are many uses of that open space conservation and land use. This exhibit shows the site, it's bold in blue here. The access from the property would be from Yew Way, which is a public roadway. Again, there are the commercial uses on Granada, the Trail South 40, which abuts it to the east, and then the Spring Meadows Common Area, which is to the south. In 1993, the city changed the designation of this property, the land use, from office professional to open space conservation. It was designated as a Florida Department of, Florida Department of Transportation borrow pit. So basically, they were gonna dig out the land and use it off-site. Being a Department of Transportation project, they didn't really, it really didn't matter which land use was there, since they're not governed by the city's land use and zoning standards. The 1984 plat, or 1984 plat, excuse me, from the Trail South 40, also shows this as FDOT borrow pit, showing the future development of the application. One of the concerns that staff had when we received this application was to demonstrate there was no environmental constraints on this property. So we asked the applicant to provide both a survey and environmental analysis of the property. The environmental analysis, which is in your packet, basically demonstrates there's no regulated wetlands on property. There are two small areas which the analysis stated was caused by the development around the property, and there's a small part of the property, which is the flood zone, which is located right here. So there are no environmental characteristics that if the city commission chooses to approve this amendment would prevent the future development. The key findings, just a summary of the staff report, was it was originally, this property was originally a borrow pit, it was sold as surplus property to the applicant. The project is within a transportation concurrency exception area, as defined by the comprehensive plan. The amendment meets the criteria of the Florida statutes as a small-scale amendment. There is a restriction to 18 units instead of the 33 offered by the applicant. The project would be accessed only through Yew Way, there would be no access available through Sagebrush Trail. There's a similar use and land use to the east of the project. The data analysis reviews the wetlands, floodplains, traffic impacts, and school capacity, and concludes there's enough infrastructure that the commission so chooses to approve this amendment. And finally, at the planning board, there was a comment that I thought was very relevant. The applicant purchased the land with an open space conservation land use, and really, this is a discretionary action of the city commission, whether you believe this is an appropriate use of land. The planning board did recommend four to two. One of the no votes thought it should remain open space conservation. The other no vote thought it should be a residential office professional, so be used as an office instead of a single-family. Staff is also recommending approval, believe it meets the criteria contained in the comprehensive plan and in your staff report. We're here to answer any questions, and the applicant is also here.
Thank you, Stephen. Any questions for Stephen?
Mayor, I do have one.
Mr. Littleton.
Mr. Spraker, with open space conservation, does that mean every tree in that plot of land is going to be like that for eternity?
No. Again, using the examples, the project next to it, the stormwater pond for Trail South 40 is all clear. If you look at Casson Park, there's obviously development activity. If you look at the Riverbend Golf Course, which also has open space conservation land use, so the answer is no. When you get to that third phase, there is a requirement that 15% of the site be retained for tree preservation.
Thank you. Any other questions at this time?
I have a question.
Commissioner Persis.
And I just want to verify, those are basically townhomes like the ones in South 40. They are
Correct, and the applicant can probably speak a little bit better about their vision, but my understanding is the goal of the applicant is to replicate what is to the east of the project.
Okay. And my next question, I don't know if you're the right person to ask, but I know we saw people that signed something that said, you know, they were against this project, and I just want to know as far as who signed it, the South 40 residents or North 40 residents?
My understanding, and I believe they're in attendance, so my understanding, it's the residents along Sagebrush Trail, and I believe all 12 property owners signed the letter. So the letter was included in the packet, and I believe it's the individuals who live along Sagebrush Trail.
Okay.
All right. We'll move to cards, and first I have the applicant. I don't know if both want to speak, but I have Eric Henry and Joey Posey.
Good evening. Joey Posey, attorney for the applicant, 420 South Nova. Just to clarify, the 12 folks that signed, they were all in attendance at the planning board, and really, I think the confusion with the discussion was, the original plan that was proposed, as mentioned in the staff report, had actually a connection to them proposed, which was what the gentleman, who's Eric Henry, the owner, thought would be a good idea for them, try to make it a little easier to, for access, trying to get out to Granada, but that clearly wasn't the case. They didn't receive that well, and we talked to every one of them after, and I think that was really where the confusion stemmed, that they thought they were getting a connection to their neighborhood, where that was more of an offer, that they were happy to do it if that was what they desired, but that clearly is not what they desire, and we have no intention to connecting to them unless they want it. Because as part of this original process, we thought this property made more sense as part of the HOA, and as it says in the staff report, about 2/3 of the folks that had an opinion about this thought it would be a good idea, but as with HOAs, it's tough to get everybody motivated to make a decision, so you wound up with a situation where they just didn't have enough people participating to figure out one way or the other. But to speak to the point directly about what the goal of the applicant is, yes. The idea is just to match the same type of footprint of the townhomes that are adjoining it with the same zoning, the same future land use, with the cap that 18 is more appropriate than actually 33. And also, I can't speak for the neighbors directly, but I imagine that, you know, probably everybody isn't pleased, but the vast majority of those that were concerned are fine with what we're proposing because of how we're representing what we're gonna do, that, you know, we want to keep them involved, we want to keep the landscaping as lush as we can for them, because that's the goal. The goal is to be inclusive, we want to be a part of the community, and other than that, the other point I wanted to touch on, that it does seem like this makes more sense than a borrow pit, and I know that some of the discussion went in terms of whether the office professional made sense, but from a traffic perspective, this seems like the most compatible. So, you know, from putting all the pieces together, this logically makes sense for, you know, making some use of the property without impacting folks. So, I'm here to answer any questions, and we're here to, you know, clarify anything that may have been confusing, because it does seem like that, you know, we really have tried to work through, and a lot of what was the issues at the front end and at the planning board, we tried to work through and got to here, that I imagine that we're, you know, we're a lot further along, and there's a lot of folks in that neighborhood that are completely fine with what we're proposing now.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Posey?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent.
Thank you. Hey, Mr. Posey. So, you're the attorney for the applicant? Yes. So I'm hoping you'll have some of these answers to a couple of these questions I Applicant purchased it, open space conservation? Correct. And thought they would purchase it under that land use and
Well, no.
And then convert it so they could put homes? And I'll just, I'll tell you, you can answer it in just one second, because you're gonna have to do a lot of convincing for me, and I'll tell you why. I don't like having the rug pulled out from underneath me, and I don't live in this neighborhood, but if I did, I would
But if I did, I would pay attention to the zoning around my home. For example, not to get too far off on a different tangent here, but I live in a residential zoned area. Don't operate an Airbnb next to my home. I don't live next to a hotel. I chose purposely to buy my home in a zoned residential area, and I think a lot of people, this is why people get fired up in Ormond Beach, is they do their due diligence, they do their homework, they purchase their property, and they look what's around them. And then if I saw that the land next to me was open space conservation, and then someone comes before me and says, "Well, we were going to go for 33, but now you should really be happy, because I'm only going to do 18." And if you really dive into this and read it, 18s might be a stretch. We're actually probably going to have less than 18 units. It doesn't sit well with me, because there's supposed to be zero units there. It's open space conservation. So I guess all of that is for this question. Why would your applicant buy land that's surplus from FDOT, designated open space conservation, and then decide they're going to try to put townhomes or homes on it?
Well, I guess to start from the beginning here, that, you know, it did start, it was supposed to be professional office. And again, I wasn't there, and I can't imagine what the circumstances around it were, but open space conservation only makes sense is if this is excavated and turned into a borrow pit. That would be the intent, and I think it's clear from looking at the plat and understanding the history here, that there was an intent to turn this into a retention pond for FDOT. And those are not, you know, the type of ponds that I imagine folks want next to the community either. And that being said, you know, 20 years goes by, they don't use it, and there's no incentive to make the change, but if you were going to try to restore what everybody thought was the best use of this property, then one would imagine that trying to be compatible with your neighbors would be the best way to do it. And that's the applicant's perspective, that if I'm going to do it, I want to match the folks that I'm next to. That Trail South 40 makes sense, they have townhomes, they're larger townhomes, which is fine, but that let's try to match that community, rather than going back to maybe even the office professional, which would probably be the more compatible if you were trying to connect the dots from the beginning. So, once we started this process, that's where we were headed, that how do we make this so we're a part of the community? How do we make it so we can develop something that's compatible with the folks that are there? Because that's our goal. And that was, I think, the confusion of where we started, because some of what was presented to them were things that he was trying to make it better for them, that, hey, can I connect to your neighborhood, because I can contribute to your HOA? I can give you, I can pay towards your amenities fees, I can pay towards your infrastructure costs.
Right.
But that was difficult, and we said, great, that's fine. If you'd rather we didn't do that, then the discussion at the planning board was, we're fine with that.
Right.
That we get it, that you guys want to be part of the, you want to be in the community, but we'd prefer you to be your own community. I guess that's the way to look at it.
I appreciate it. I asked you a question, and you know what? And you worked hard giving me the answer, and I thank you for that. As far as a borrow pit, the only other ones that I know of are at Central Park in Ormond Beach right now, and they're filled with water, and they're beautiful, and maybe the residents would be okay with something like that. I don't know. I haven't heard from them yet. I just know that this is something that gets residents...
Yes, of course.
Fired up, aggravated, feel like the wool's been pulled over their eyes, or the rug's been pulled out from underneath of them. And I needed to ask the question. Thank you very much.
And that was very appreciative, because there was 30 or so residents that were there at that planning board to get input, to get feedback, and we sat, we walked through everything before, during, and after that hearing, and I feel like we got to a really good place, and I suspect it'll pan out that way, too, but I'll leave it to that.
Thank you. And Deputy Mayor Persis?
I just have a couple of comments. First of all, I live near this area, and I drove over there. I took a look at this area, because I wanted to see it with my own eyes. And it's such a small lot. It's less than three acres. I think it's 2.8 or something. To me, it affects Sagebrush Trail, the people that live there, the people in Spring Meadows, the people in Chelsea Place. I don't see anything wrong with leaving something open conservation. We don't have a whole lot of green space left in that area, and it's just concerning to me that, why we would need to build something right there. I mean, I don't think you could even get 18 in there. You've got to build, you know, roads and everything else for people to go in and out, and I think it would be even less. And I just think, I think for our Ormond Beach area, I would like to see the green space left alone.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
And to speak to, or I'm sorry, I didn't know. Can I?
I didn't really hear a question in that, but if you wanted to.
Well, I just wanted to highlight the fact that, again, I understand where you're going and what you're saying. It's that, you know, part of this to consider, like I tried to highlight before, is that you started from a place where this was planned as office professional, and then because the FDOT wants to do a borrow pit, that folks thought open space conservation would be the most appropriate use, because you could still do a borrow pit. That it doesn't get you any, you're no less, you know, worse off from FDOT's perspective, even though you're not subject to the, they're not subject to the local government rules anyway, but that's what I imagine the planning thought process was in that perspective, and again, trying to figure out what's most compatible with that area, given the original planned, you know, perspective of what the community should have out there. That's where we're coming from. So, but I do understand what you're saying, that more green spaces is something that should be encouraged, and that's something we'd love to be a part of, too. And again, 18 units is probably ambitious, and I suspect you're right, that this will probably come in a couple of units short of that, but, you know, part of that process is the site plan that kind of flushes that out. And, you know, I just, without spending some real, you know, serious money on that process to figure out what we can do that matches the Trail South 40, that, you know, that will reveal itself as we go, and the neighbors will be involved in that process, too.
Thank you. I think that's it at this time. Thank you. Next up is Eric Henry? Did you want to speak, or?
I have a question.
Mr. Henry waves in support, and we will go to Steve Moulain. I think representing the, maybe the Sagebrush Trail folks.
I'm not going to waste a lot of time, because a lot of my points have already been made by council members. I purchased my property at that location 21 years ago. I did the due diligence. I am surrounded by water retention ponds and a conservation area. We have 12 residents on that street. We have a limited traffic area over there. The existing professional buildings that are there are reasonably compatible with having that residential area. I heard the attorney state that most of the people, or a good part of the people in South 40, were in favor of going ahead with the subdivision. The biggest issue they seemed to have was they were going to exit whatever traffic, ingress and egress, out onto Sagebrush Trail, directly across the front of our properties. I've spoken to enough of my neighbors to know that that's not what they were looking for when they purchased. I have outlived a good number of my neighbors who were on that street when I purchased, but every one of them appreciates the fact that we are surrounded by water retention ponds, conservation areas, right? There was no, nothing in there that indicated that, well, as was indicated here earlier, you can purchase a piece of property under one zoning, and, you know, guys, you really got to give me the opportunity to go ahead and utilize the property that I purchased, because now I own it, and I really need to make a profit off of it. Good for you. It was open land use conservation when you purchased it. I'm not interested in seeing it, turn it into a borrow pit. Anybody that did their research knew that it could be turned into a borrow pit. That means we would have noise and confusion for a period of time, until it was dredged. And then, the point that's already been made in other areas, it would become additional retention area for water, for runoff off of Granada Boulevard, and so on. But it would not involve people. It would not involve traffic, once it was developed into a water-filled borrow pit. And as far as the people go...
Appreciate it. Stephen, I had a couple of questions for you.
Yes.
Please. Thank you, Stephen. You had your three minutes, and we appreciate your comments. Where would the exit be? Because I guess, you know, when I looked at the packet, I was thinking it was onto Sagebrush, which I actually felt better about than the dumping it onto, directly onto Granada.
Correct. So Yoon Way is a right-of-way which connects to Granada. It was built when 1180 West Granada was constructed around 2002. So this would be the entry and exit. There is no access or no right of access onto Sagebrush Trail.
Okay. Good deal. And then, medium-density residential, why not low-density residential?
Well, if you look at the, I mean, you could do low-density. So when we were looking at this, if you look at the land use map, the medium density is right next to it. I mean, basically, our understanding is they were trying to replicate the same type of product. So, you know, as we discussed in planning board, it made most sense to match the medium density. If the commission believes low-density is appropriate, that would certainly reduce it to 4.3 units per acre, maximum, times 2.81.
Right. And then with setbacks and whatnot, how many units do you think you would actually achieve as a result of that designation versus the MDR?
So the low-density would allow 12 units total as a maximum.
12 total. But they might lose one or two of those, or three or four of those as a result of...
Until you get to that last step of the site plan, it's really hard to know what the actual, once you do the stormwater parking, all the things that go into it, the 15% natural. The planning board had a pretty good discussion that they know it's not 18, but they don't know what the bottom number would be.
Okay. I appreciate, appreciate that. And then, Commissioner, any other questions for Mr. Spraker? Commissioner Selby.
Yeah, Mayor, I have a question for Mr. Spraker. Could you go over the history of the land use again? I mean, how did it come to be open space conservation?
So, my understanding is that the Department of Transportation owned a much larger tract than what you see today. So, you know, I'm not sure exactly if it went to Trail South 40, or if it went to the commercial. So, you know, back in the 80s, there was very few development out here and there, basically taking, you know, the plan was to take the land and make a borrow pit for use otherwise. In 1993, as part of the overall comprehensive plan, there was a series of administrative land use changes. So as this property was annexed, it was changed from office professional to open space conservation. Again, the Department of Transportation can do whatever they need with their property and don't have to abide by city land use and zoning.
So, is it fair to say that the land use that's currently on that property is really a function of how the DOT proposed, or was proposing, to use the land?
Correct. And again, the property to the east also has, I don't have a great shot of it. So this property is, has open space conservation land use, and it's a stormwater pond. So you could certainly do a stormwater pond or a borrow pit as part of that open space conservation land use.
So if the Trails Inc. owned that parcel, the subject parcel, back in 1993, is it likely that it would have gotten open space conservation land use?
No, more likely it would have been the medium-density residential.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Spraker? Thank you, Stephen. Appreciate that. Sorry to make you do math on the run. All right. So now, we're at the point where we would need a motion and a second for discussion
So I'll move ordinance 2021-10.
I'll second the motion.
Moved and seconded, and discussion will start with Commissioner Selby.
Thank you, Mayor. So, this is a tough situation. I certainly hear the residents' concern, especially for somebody who actually, you know, did their homework and looked at the land use of this adjoining parcel. But also, when I look at the aerial, I notice that there, around that Sagebrush Trail, there's a, there are at least two medical offices. One is essentially really adjoining it. Maybe the, I don't know if we have the aerial photo that we can show that. Yeah. So, well, I think it's the, there's a dentist office, and then the Yoon office, but there's, that's not a real good aerial. I've got a better one on mine. But in any case, there are some commercial uses, and I think this land would have, the reason that it got the open space conservation land use is because the DOT owned it, and they said, hey, someday we're going to make this a borrow pit. And so that's unfortunate for the homeowners who are concerned about having something built that mirrors what they live in, on their land, because it's not, you know, if it gets developed, it's going to be like what their project is. But I understand why staff administratively created that land use for it. So, and then I also understand why somebody would buy it, you know, with the expectation that this is clearly a, you know, under any other circumstances, I think we'd be talking about how that land would get developed. So, that's why I made the motion.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else? Commissioner Littleton.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Selby makes a great point, but it is a tough decision, right? However, I do support this, because I believe that the land use is going to be compatible with that area. And that's all I'm supporting it right now, is the change in the land use. Whenever it comes down the pike, I'm going to be very strict on what goes here, but this is sort of a tough vote, right? It's my zone. I know some of the people that are there, and that piece of property, you know, it hasn't been quiet all the time. I've gone out there a few times, because occasionally there's homeless camps in there, and they start fires and the such. I think a development of that property done the right way can be a gem in Ormond Beach and still keep the adjacent property owners happy. So that's why I'm supporting it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else? Commissioner Kent.
For me, it is not a difficult choice. This is a very easy choice. It is zoned, open space conservation. The people that purchased the residences around it, some, if not all, did all of their due diligence. This would be a huge change in their quality of life. They were there first, before this land was purchased by someone else who's coming in and wants to do a land use change, so that they can put some units in there, and then who knows, you know, leave town, do whatever. I don't know. I'm not going to speculate and go into all of that. I just know that you all will be left with the aftermath. And if I was in your shoes and you were in mine, I would sure hope you had someone like me thinking the same way and saying, absolutely not tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner. And Commissioner Persis.
Yeah, I am going to have to, you know, this is an easy decision for me also. Just seeing that area, I just don't think it's the best place for any further development in that area. I think it looks beautiful the way it is. The green space is there. I don't know why we have to, people feel like we have to, you know, build on every leftover green space that we have in Ormond Beach, and I think we need to leave it the way it is. These people bought these homes in good faith, and as I said before, you know, not to... These people bought these homes in good faith, and as I said before, you know, not just Sagebrush Trail, but Spring Meadows, Chelsea Place, all those people are going to be impacted by this, and their quality of life is going to be affected. And they're not going to enjoy their homes as much, and they're not going to have the privacy. So for me, it is also a very easy choice.
Thank you, Commissioner. Wendy, please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis.
No.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Commissioner Kent.
No.
Mayor Partington.
No. And we will close the public hearings. Thank you for your time, and thank you for the presentations on both sides. And we will move to second reading of ordinances, 10A.
Ordinance number 2021-09, an ordinance approving the final plat for the Pineland PRD subdivision, Phases 4 and 5, a planned residential development, establishing conditions and expiration date of approval and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2021-09, read by title only.
Thank you, Wendy. I do not have any cards for 10A.
I'll move Ordinance 2021-09.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Kent. Any discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner, sorry, Mayor Partington.
No problem. Yes. 11A.
Resolution number 2021-63, a resolution declaring the intention of the City Commission to consider vacating a portion of Flagler Road abutting 1480 North US Highway 1, Volusia County Parcel Number 3136-01-59-0010, establishing a time certain for a public hearing and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number 2021-63, read by title only.
Thank you, Wendy. And again, I'll ask our Planning Director, Stephen Spraker, to speak on this item.
Good evening. So this property is located at 1480 North US 1. This would be US Highway 1 here. Broadway would be located here. And then the FEC Railroad is to the rear. This property is under application for the Ormond Ace Hardware. As part of the development along this corridor, we have released five feet of right-of-way on either side of Flagler Road. The plat at right-of-way is 60 feet. Our city standard is 50 feet. So we have released it. This is the site plan that shows the area of the right-of-way vacation, and within your packet is the actual right-of-way. It's a five-foot strip along Flagler. Basically, the site plan review committee has reviewed this and determined that there is no current or public future use of this five feet, and is recommending approval. If approved, it would go to an ordinance which will be backed before you in April.
Thank you, Stephen. Any questions for Stephen?
Move approval?
Second.
Second. Commissioner Selby, did you have one?
Yeah, I did. But can you just put the, maybe the aerial would be? I was just trying to figure out, that section of, is it Flagler Avenue?
Correct.
So there's, the property owner to the, to the south, I guess that is? They got five feet also?
Correct. So this aerial is older. This is the store at Phase 2.
Oh, okay.
So this is developed, and as part of their application, they got five feet on this side.
Okay. So, and is, Flagler Avenue is not in now, is it? Is it in all the way?
Flagler is improved to roughly where Gower Street is.
Right.
And then it becomes a stormwater swale that feeds into the unopened Magnolia. So this was the conveyance swale that was done as part of store.
Oh, okay. So, and that is, so that has a public purpose? That's why you didn't vacate the entire right-of-way? Okay, that was all I was just wondering why. We didn't just split it down the middle and, okay. All right. Great, thank you.
Any other questions?
For the applicant, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Just for the applicant, Mr. Gross, if you could just go to the mic, so I have a question for you. So, because my constituents are going to ask, and I'll wait till you get there. And I hope you can, I hope, Mr. Gross, you can answer this now, but...
I hope so, too.
I know my constituents are going to ask me. This has proposed Ormond Ace Hardware on Highway 1. Are you planning on keeping your current store where it is?
Yes, we are.
That is great news, and I would just, the second piece really isn't a question, but my constituents, we've talked about it, they would love a beachside store. Thank you.
Future plans.
Any other questions or discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. 11B.
Resolution number 2021-64, a resolution declaring the intention of the City Commission to consider vacating two unnamed alleys lying between lots 1 through 30, Block 59, National Gardens subdivision, as recorded in Map Book 10, Page 250 to 253, public records of Volusia County, Florida, within the property at 1480 North US Highway 1, Volusia County Parcel Number 3136-01-59-0010, establishing a time certain for a public hearing and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number 2021-64, read by title only.
Thank you, Wendy. Again, Stephen, if there's anything additional you want to add?
Same property, when the plat was done in 1926, there are two alleys that are located within the property that need to be vacated so they can go forward and do their site plan.
Perfect. I don't have any cards.
Like to move approval of Ordinance 2021-64.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion or questions? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. And we'll move to 12A, discussion items, future use and maintenance of Riverbend Golf Course Airport property. And for that, are we starting with...
Start with Brian, and then I can answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, City Manager. Start with Brian Roddemaker, our Economic Development Director.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Deputy Mayor of City Commission. This is a discussion item being brought before you to seek direction from the Commission on the future use of the Riverbend Golf Course area, and to identify a level of maintenance for the land. There are three considerations that the city staff has identified to help guide the conversation and future recommendations. The first consideration is the Riverbend land area in terms of its location. The area is on airport property and comprises of approximately 219 acres. There are three distinct areas. The first is southeast of Airport Road and abuts the Timoca River. And then Areas 2 and 3 are surrounding the airport operations area here. The land use is recreation, open space, with a zoning of special environmental. The second consideration is with regards to the Federal Aviation Administration. The city is the airport sponsor for the airport, and we have two obligations as that sponsor. First obligation is to maintain and operate the airport as part of the national airspace system. And the second obligation is to generate revenue for the airport and its projects through aeronautical and non-aeronautical leases. The golf course was a non-aeronautical lease. The FAA currently, in its manuals, identifies golf as an, is a, what's the word I'm looking for? All right. Incompatible use on airport property. And we also spoke with the FAA with regards to the opportunity to continue golf there, and they discouraged it for three primary reasons. The first reason is that, given runway and taxiway projects that are considered in the airport master plan, should they be implemented, it would require redesign of the golf course as it stands. The second reason is that a new, non-aeronautical lease for golf restricts the city as the airport sponsor and the FAA's rights and powers to use the property for future aeronautical purposes. And then the third reason I was discouraged is that golf courses create wildlife hazards, which is a concern for the flying public. The third option for, the third consideration to bring to mind is the maintenance of the Riverbend leasehold area. The property reverted back into the possession of the city in December, which was an on-growing season for golf courses, so it allowed us ample time to identify several options to maintain it and to understand what that cost would be. We have them here listed. The first option is to provide basic grounds maintenance of the accessible area. This would be primarily the parking lot area, and the three primary buildings would equate to about $770 a month, or $9,300 a year. The second option involves basic mowing and line trimming of the entire golf course area. This would be about $17,000 a month, or $207,000 a year. And then the third option is a comprehensive maintenance plan, which would basically maintain the golf course as though we're being used for golf, and this plan is $90,000 a month, which is about $1 million a year. For comparative purposes, the city did look at other golf courses in the region that have public golf courses, to identify what their operating budgets were. Looking at budgets and audits, we've identified New Smyrna Beach Golf Club, they have an operating budget of $1.4 million. And then in 2019, it operated at a loss of $163,000. And Port Orange had a somewhat similar budget of $1.4 million, and they operated at a loss of $304,000 in fiscal year 2019. There is significant deferred maintenance on the Riverbend Golf Course, which would require significant improvements to bringing it up to a competitive level of play with the other golf courses. And then in addition to that, we'd have to look at the cost for full-time employment as well as ongoing maintenance of the facility. So with these three considerations in mind, the city staff is again looking for direction from the City Commission, with offering recommendations for you to consider. Staff recommends conducting a land use plan analysis to determine potential future uses of this site. And then upon completion of that plan, bring it back to the City Commission for review. And then the second option with regards to the maintenance, staff would recommend going with Option 1, doing basic maintenance of the accessible areas in the interim until that future land use plan is complete. That concludes the discussion, and we can answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Brian?
Question.
Commissioner Persis.
When you say a plan analysis, who does that plan analysis? Does it cost money? And can tell me a little bit more about that?
Sure does. In this situation, in this instance, because the property is airport property, we would most likely look at bringing onboard an aviation engineering firm, potentially one that we have on retainer with the city, to do those kinds of plans. They're pretty common. And they do cost money, depending on the level and the scope. I mean, to be a broad range, it would be anywhere between $20,000 to $50,000.
Okay. Thank you.
And is that reimbursable by DOT? To a certain level, or no, for that type of plan or study? If you know.
We could look into that.
Okay. Any other questions? Commissioner Selby.
Yeah, for the benefit of the citizens that are here and others who are interested in golf, reading between the lines, staff is recommending that Riverbend not reopen. Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. I just wanted to, you know, sometimes the government ease, you know, is like a little hard to understand, but, okay. And so, really, if we're, one question I was going to add, there's, if that's the case, then there's actually no reason at all to even consider Options 2 and 3 on maintenance, right?
That's correct.
I mean, because obviously, if you're not going to reopen the golf course, you don't have to keep it at playing level, and if you're not going to reopen the golf, okay. So now we're down to $777 a month to cut the grass around the clubhouse and the maintenance facility and the cart barn. Okay. And blow off the parking lot. All right. And then, let me just make sure I understand. So on this land use plan analysis, I'm assuming our airport consultant that's onboard already is the one who will do that plan? And they would, and I assume they would focus in on the two parcels that are closest to the airport, that are west of Airport Road. And then, maybe later, they, you know, somebody, we can figure out what to do with the piece east of Airport Road.
So, you're correct. We would give them some guidance in that, and certainly, if that scope were greater than $25,000, would have to come back to the Commission anyway. The area east-south Airport Road, I don't know my directions very well.
Between Airport Road and the river. Yeah.
Right. That area seems to be more particularly for conservation or passive recreation, because that's what's currently there, aside from a few of those holes over there. So that would be something that we think would be best to maintain that conservation area in that area.
For now, you mean? I mean, somewhere down the road, that theoretically could be more of business park, right? I mean...
It could be, but I don't think that that, that would not be staff's recommendation at this time.
Right.
We would move to change that land use.
Right. Okay. Well, this is, you know, this is a sad day for golfers. You know, we, in Ormond Beach, you know, we now no longer have a, if this is the will of this Commission, we no longer have a public golf course in Ormond Beach. Well, we haven't since December 30th, with the closing of Timoca Oaks and now Riverbend. But I think it's a trend. And with Indigo South closing, with, I'm sorry, with Pelican Bay South and with Indigo closing, you know, there's, golf is, I mean, I'm, actually, I think I'm the only golfer up here on this Commission. Golf is, I frequently, I love golf, but I frequently say it's too hard, takes too long, and it's too expensive. And the reality is, it's not expensive enough. It actually, I mean, if the city of Port Orange is subsidizing golf to the tune of $300,000 a year, I mean, think about that. $300,000 a year. I don't know how many rounds they get there, but they need to be charging more so that they're not subsidizing golf. And if New Smyrna is subsidizing golf to the tune of $160,000 a year, they should be paying more. And we don't know how much Daytona Beach, the city of Daytona Beach, is subsidizing their 36 holes at Daytona Beach Country Club, because they very conveniently put golf, they have one category for golf, tennis, and fleet. Fleet is all of their vehicles. And they put that all into one category in their audit, in their budget, which seems a little strange to me, and I'm not going to, I have no idea why they did that, but you all can speculate in the same way that I would, right? So I suspect that they're subsidizing their 36 holes to a pretty good level also. And I've had several people approach me and say, gee, you know, the Commission should consider, the City Commission should consider subsidizing golf like we do other sports, for youth sports or other adult sports, et cetera. But I, you know, I don't know this for a fact, but I'm pretty dang confident that there is not one single sport in leisure services that is subsidized to the tune of $150,000 to $300,000. You know, I think I can say that with a pretty high level of certainty. And so that's the challenge we have. The challenge we have is, and furthermore, this is the other thing I was thinking about today, was that an awful lot of the golfers who golf, who used to golf at Riverbend, don't even live in Ormond Beach. So those people, they live wherever. They live in Flagler County, or they live in Daytona, or they live in Holly Hill. They're not even paying, they're not even taxpayers, the Ormond Beach, paying taxes to provide the subsidy. So they're getting that subsidy absolutely for free. And that's just, as a city commissioner, whose primary responsibility is to be a good steward of the tax dollars that we receive, and by the way, we're the third lowest tax rate in all of Volusia County. And I would argue, the best quality of life. So to me, that's the best, absolute best value. So this is, this is a very tough, this is a sad decision. It's not a hard decision, it's a sad decision. It's sad that we're at this point. And I just want to say one other thing. The Mike and Ray Eddy, who were the, for those of you who don't know this little bit of history, I'm just going to share it. To the best of my knowledge, and I may be a little bit inaccurate on some of the facts, but I've known the Eddys for a long, for many, many years. They wanted to build a golf course. They were the, Mike and Ray were the McDonald's franchisees in the greater area, and they had, I don't know, at one point, I think they had 30 McDonald's restaurants, maybe it was 20 or so, I don't know, but a lot of them. And... And they wanted to build a golf course. And they came to the city of, they said, they saw this vacant land around the airport, and they knew the city owned it. And they came to the city and they said, would you all lease that land to us, and we will build, out of our own pocket, we'll build a golf course on that property, and then we'll pay you rent every month. Okay? And they did that. It operated effectively and profitably, well, at least, they paid the rent. I don't, I don't know for sure if it operated profitably, but they paid their rent every month. Then, several years ago, they sold that to somebody else. That guy then, I guess, sold the business to his son-in-law. And really, it's kind of gone downhill from that point, to the point where it no longer was making money. Okay? So it's not, no longer a profitable business and unable to pay rent. And in the last 12 or 18 months, I think he only paid rent about half of the time. So we're gonna end up with where we started, meaning the city of Ormond Beach. We started with a bunch of vacant land with a bunch of trees on it, and that's what we're gonna end up with, that was generating no revenue back then. And now we're gonna end up with a bunch of vacant land that is, at least for now, isn't generating any revenue. And it's unfortunate, but it's not a business model that can sustain itself. And so for that reason, I, you know, I, again, I'm sad about the closing of Riverbend, but I think it's the prudent thing for the city to do. And also, I support the, I do support the plan, future land use plan, and I support the recommendation on maintenance.
Number one.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I guess that's the question for each of us. Those are the two decision points, the level of maintenance, one, two, or three, and then whether you support the land use analysis plan. Is it okay, we'll just go right down the line. Commissioner Kent?
Yes. And Commissioner Selby, great little history lesson, thank you. The only issue I have, what you said, was that you're the only golfer. I'll just say, my son has yet to beat me at a putt-putt golf location anywhere. He thinks he can, but I get a hole-in-one just about every time we play. And I'm not afraid to look at him and say, in your face, every time, every time that it does happen. And I'll be, I'll be pretty, pretty brief on this. You know, cities, I don't think do a good enough job of having recreation and creating money from it. We almost always spend money and subsidize for our residents. You know, we have an event that's been happening the past few years. We have a 5K, a half marathon, and a marathon. We have a non-Ormond Beach resident who comes in here, and I have said publicly up here, I feel like backs a dump truck or pickup truck back up to get the money from Ormond Beach residents to run a race and then get out of here. I have said, Ormond Beach should be doing that race. We should be getting the money for our residents to offset costs for other things, but I don't want to get too far off topic here. So I am, I am for the $777 a month, $9,324 annually to keep our basic grounds maintenance and accessible areas only. Option number one.
All right. And you're okay with land use plan?
I am.
Analysis of that.
I am.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Persis?
Yes, I'm fine with both of those also. I just want to say to the golfers out there, I used to play a little golf, and I love it. It's just, it was like beyond my budget, and so I never, you know, continued my golfing, but I was always really pretty good, I have to say. But, so now I'm a tennis player, and I understand how you must be disappointed, because if I couldn't play tennis right now, it'd be very sad, because it's a way to get out, get out in the fresh air, and have, share friendships, and share laughs, and jokes, and camaraderie with your friends. So it is very disappointing, so I just want you to know that I do feel for you. But I do think we're making the right decision here, so I approve both.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Littleton?
Thank you. Yes, I agree with staff's recommendations. Fellow commissioners spoke, said basically everything, especially the challenges with the FAA not wanting a golf course there. And so we're really in the pickle here. And that's what I'm saying, it's, it is sad, sort of seeing change happen, and, but it is what it is at the current moment, so.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I agree with the option one, 777, and also the land use analysis plan. I, it's just, the calculus that I settled on was looking at the report from Terry Buchan, or Buchan, CGCS, apostrophe MG, the Golf Agronomy International LLC, Due Diligence Golf Course Infrastructure Review. He, and that's dated almost last year, so it's probably gotten worse since then, but he listed $7 million of things that need to be done to bring it up to a decent level. And so spending, and then also Bomar's report listed about $400,000. So spending $7.4 million to lose $300,000, there's just no way that that works under any scenario. So I agree, it's sad, and I'm sorry, I'm sorry for the golfers, but that's, it's where we're at, that's where the trend is in golf closures. I think I've mentioned before, developers will tell you, they don't build golf courses to make money, they build them to sell houses. And then they sell the houses and move on. And, you know, we've seen what happens after that. So I didn't see the report from Mr. Buchan in the packet, and so I would just ask if that be made part of the record, that attachment that was provided to us, if that could be made part of 12A for the record.
Do you want the entire report, Mr. Mayor, or just that schedule?
I'll leave that to staff's discretion. Just the schedule is fine with me, that points out the dollar amount. And the, did you need any other decision points on that from us?
No, we've got your direction. And as I said, we'll work on the specifics of the master planning process for that area and come back to you with, at any decision point that we need further clarification.
Thank you. And then Joyce or Randy, did you need that in a motion form, what we all just explained?
Well, it's really up to the city manager. I think she's pretty much got consensus on the direction, and it's all gonna have to come back to the commission anyway. But if you wanna make a motion, just to put an explanation point on it, you can certainly do that, it's up to you.
Commissioner, I'll leave it up, if anybody wants to make a motion.
I move to, I move that staff have a land use plan analysis to determine the potential future uses of the former golf course site, and also to pay $777 a month, which would be $9,324 annually, to keep the basic grounds and maintenance in the areas accessible.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Wendy, please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And we will move to reports, suggestions, and requests, and we start with city manager Joyce Shanahan.
Good evening, and thank you very much. As you all know, we just lived through another Bike Week. I would like to extend my deep appreciation to the Police Department, the Fire Department, and the Public Works Department. They all work together in concert to keep our community safe, the bikers safe, and themselves safe. Sadly, there were two fatalities in Ormond. The chief tells me it's probably one of the biggest Bike Weeks we've seen in more than 10 years. It's the 40th anniversary of Bike Week, was this passed?
Eightieth.
Eightieth. Eightieth, who smokes? There were some complaints regarding, you know, loud music from the vehicles and certainly from the mufflers. But by and large, I think we had a pretty successful Bike Week. I'm sure you all have some comments about that. And as always, please don't hesitate to call me about that. FDOT, I-95, and US-1 interchange, the PD&E has been re-advertised, and the consultants to perform this work are currently putting together their teams. So FDOT expects to have something in a couple of weeks. This PD&E, they do the preliminary environmental and like schematic design. And then if FDOT likes what they see from that particular consultant, they can go directly to design without having to go through that whole process again. So we're really excited about that, and we're hopeful that they'll find a contract that FDOT likes and can expedite that project. So that continues to move forward. We've talked a lot about planning, and we've shared with you the desire for the leisure services master planning consultant to meet with each of you, and I think all of you have scheduled a time to meet with them. We will have a public workshop in the future on that, once the results of that plan are put together. A public meeting will be held on Wednesday, March 31st, between 6:00 and 8:00 p.m. at the South Ormond Neighborhood Center to get public feedback on there. A joint Quality of Life and Leisure Services Advisory Board meeting will be held on Thursday, April 1st, from 11:30 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. This will be, again, held at the South Ormond Neighborhood Center. And master planning and surveying has changed greatly in the last 15 years since this master plan was developed. Now you can do QR codes at site to get the survey up right on your phone, so you don't have to fill out a paper survey. So that will be the same, we're doing one right now at Casson Park. I think some of you have seen that survey, working with Main Street, that survey was developed to get some additional feedback on that area. And there are places there that if you just scan your phone, it'll bring the survey up, and you can respond. So the same will be true for this particular survey, to ensure that we get a wide response, and just not folks living at home that have different opinions than maybe other folks. The US-1 water and force main upgrade, this contractor demobilized during Bike Week just because we don't want that kind of confusion, so they're up and running again. The Casement-Snoreside project is essentially complete. McDonald House is making good progress on that, and we hope to have them finish that, those two sides by the end of June, beginning of July, and come back to you with a plan for the other two sides to get that completely finished. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have for me tonight.
Any questions for the city manager? Thank you.
Thank you.
Assistant city manager Claire Whitley.
Good evening. I just wanted to say thank you to the Fire Department. Battalion Chief Megan Cortier let me ride along with her during Bike Week. I don't know what I was thinking, it seemed exciting, but it was really amazing and eye-opening. Just all of the first responders, they were, they acted swiftly, safely, calmly, and professionally. It was just amazing to watch, that one time only, that's the only time I've watched, but it was really impressive. So I just want to thank, thank you all for having me.
Very good. And city attorney Randy Hayes.
No, sir. Thank you and good night.
Thank you, Randy. And tonight, we start with Commissioner Kent.
All right. I can tell things are really starting to get back to normal when I see, like, Randy Crabtree and Greg Stokes and Doug Thomas in the audience, and Joe Daniels. It's, it's good stuff to see you all out and about and publicly participating in your meetings. Steven Spraker, you're next on my list. You are extremely knowledgeable and very good at your job. I have been wanting to share that publicly for quite some time, actually, since the time we met and talked about the pedestrian crosswalks on A1A. I have been thoroughly impressed with your knowledge and the depth of it. And tonight, I had three questions concerning land use, and I didn't have to ask one of them, because you answered all of them whenever you spoke. You are a gem, and Joyce looks even more brilliant by having you in that position. So thank you for the job you do every day. Chief Severs, Chief Godfrey, excellent work by your departments, day in and day out. A wonderful Bike Week. My heart goes out to your employees that had to deal with the deaths. That is never easy. I don't even want to think about the nightmares, but it's, it's a fact of life. And I just would like for you both, please, to share with your departments that Commissioner Kent really appreciates everything they did. And Joyce, if you would please make sure Public Works feels, knows the exact same McDonald House, I drive by it every day, and it is looking great. The contractor's doing a really fantastic job. And my last comments, I mentioned it before, but Colby, I just want to tell you how much my heart smiled tonight watching you like a kid in a candy store. You were giddy with the goodies you received from, from your city. And I say "your" city, because we've, we've adopted you. Even though you grew up in New Smyrna, and you're gonna be working over in Deland at Stetson University, you know, it's a big thing I teach my son day in and day out, leave everything you touch better than, when you leave it, leave it better. And it's, that's, I talk to him about, you know, when we go fishing, leave the boat better than whenever we went out that day, earlier that day. Your friendships, your time at school, eventually his jobs. And you have made us better. You are a good human being. And to see your mom here tonight was, it was just spectacular, because I think you were shocked, I think your coworkers, I think your coworkers did a good job of keeping the secret and making sure there was information in the proclamation that we all were learning about you. And, you know, I'm, I'm so happy for you, yet it's bittersweet, because you're fantastic at what you do every day. I wish you nothing but the best. Good night.
Thank you, Commissioner. And deputy mayor Persis?
Good evening, everyone. Again, finally, Colby, I would just like to wish you the best of luck again. I know I've said something before at our other meeting, but I wish you the best of luck at Stetson, and I sure enjoy seeing your mom again. It's been a while since I've seen her, and I could tell by her face that she was so proud of you, as all of us are up here. So we just wish you the best, and thank you for everything you did for the city of Ormond Beach. I also wanted to thank Chief Severs and Chief Godfrey for a fabulous Bike Week. I was kind of in one of the areas where one of those fatalities occurred, and it, you know, it's very sad. But I think all in all, our Bike Week was great. It was crowded, it was very, very crowded. I couldn't believe it. The traffic going, we went to, actually, we were driving to Orlando on Saturday, heading southwest, and the cars coming in, going to Bike Week and to the beach. I've never seen it, you know, it was all the way past, like, the exit to New Smyrna. It was crazy, just a lot of traffic. But I know the vendors here in Volusia County are probably very happy right now. I did have a couple of calls about, and I know Joyce mentioned it, just about the loud music. And it was the music that was coming from motorcycles, not from events or anything. But, you know, now these big motorcycles have radios and everything, and CDs, I guess, and they're playing them at top speed, I mean, at top volume, so they can hear them when they're riding, with their pipes going and everything. So it does get very loud. So maybe we can put our heads together and think of something, you know, especially if you're in residential areas and riding your motorcycle, that you have to turn your music down. But other than that, I just think it was just a fabulous weekend. I wanted to also just mention that I go to the T-ball courts frequently now to see my grandson play out there. And Doug, it's just a fabulous area. I just love seeing your name out there, it's wonderful. But the kids just love it. I see so many, all ages of kids playing T-ball, soccer, and everything, and baseball, softball out there. It's fabulous, and just something great that the city does offer to our young people. I just love it. And with, just in, in closing, I would just like to say tomorrow, St. Patrick's Day, I hope everybody wears a little bit of green, celebrates the day. It's a kind of a special day for a lot of people. So I know I always like putting on a green shirt, or a green necklace, or something, or a hat, just to kind of signify the day. And we won't be back until after Easter, so I just hope, if anybody's traveling, please stay safe, and we will all see each other in April. Thank you.
Thank you. And Commissioner Littleton?
Thank you, Mayor. Bike Week was cra-
Bike Week was crowded, as fellow commissioners said, and it was a lot of fun. Iron Horse was packing, that's my go-to spot. I saw our first responders working diligently during the hard work. And give props to them, and even some of the sheriffs were out there directing traffic up US-1. It was great. I think this is going to be the trend from now on, especially with sort of Daytona snubbing the Main Street vendors. I could see Main Street Station coming up US-1 and being Ridgewood Station. Not that I'm advocating for that, but maybe I am. And Joyce, that's why I'm so happy you mentioned the Forest Main and some of the projects we have up there. We really sort of have to be prepared for that type of crowding and those types of events for the, in the future, because I really think people are going to be coming to Ormond Beach as opposed to Daytona Beach in the future. And it was so crowded, the first Sunday, I drove up US-1 to get the Limitless Playground, and Limitless Playground was packed with kids, which was great, which is why I hope we get one of those little bar scan codes up there, so they can take the survey with the Rex Master Plan. And it was crazy, sort of in a good way. And that's all I want to say. I hope we prepare for that in the future, so our residents and our business owners can make the fullest extent of it. And with that, I'll say good night.
Thank you. And Commissioner Selby.
Thank you, Mayor. We had a Ormond Main Street Board Meeting Monday night, yes, last night, and a few events have been scheduled. I just want to share them with you. April 10th, Saturday, April 10th, is Spring Fling, small business shop and dine locally. May 23rd will be Taste of Ormond, and it's going to be at Destination Daytona this year, May 23rd. The River Fest will be in early fall, probably September, maybe October. And the Celtic Festival, which is normally in the spring, has been postponed until probably late fall, but probably November. So, just, you know, so the two that are actually scheduled, April 10th, the Spring Fling, and May 23rd, Taste of Ormond. Next, I just want to, you know, I just wanted to comment again on Riverbend. It's just, it's a, it's just, it's sad. It's sad that we're at the place where we, you know, there's not a economically viable way to have that business continue to operate in the city. Next, I wanted to, we received a letter from the Chairman of the County Council regarding the Plantation Oaks lots, and the 76 lots up in Plantation Oaks. And if you read that letter, the chairman asked us, asked the city of Ormond Beach to contribute $100,000 to that purchase price. And that kind of jumped out at me, and I wanted to bring that up to this body, because I don't, every single Ormond Beach taxpayer contributes to Echo and Volusia Forever. And this is not an initiative that we are, if this goes through Echo, this is not an Echo project that we're proposing to the Echo Fund. This is actually a county, county chairman is the one who's, you know, pushing this harder than anybody else. So, for him to ask Ormond Beach residents to pay twice, rubs me the wrong way. And I would like, I personally would like for us to let the chairman know, let the whole county council know, that we don't think that Ormond Beach residents should have to pay twice on that project. I don't know how you all feel about that, but I would like to see us send a letter in response to his letter that lays that out. Because also in his letter, he says that he's, he would not support the use of any county council, or any county general funds for the acquisition of the property, that only Echo, or I think he says Echo or Forever funds would be used. So, I'd just like to clarify that. I don't, I don't, I don't think it's right for him to even ask, to be honest with you. And I'm, I don't know where that, how that originated, but I want, I want to watch out for our residents, that we're not pushed into, well, we wouldn't, wouldn't be pushed into a corner, but that we're being asked to do that.
Commissioner Kent.
Yeah, I'll bite, since there was a lure thrown out. And I'll just say that when I read the letter, you know, he states very clearly at the end that this was him, not the county council. And I'm in agreement with you, Commissioner Selby. However, I mean, writing a letter, sure, we can do that, but sometimes you just don't do anything. And that says something also. It kind of, not kind of, it does say something. It lets your message be known to that individual. But I think everything you said is completely accurate. And my thought actually was, you're asking Ormond Beach, why aren't you asking all 16 cities? Why is this just an Ormond Beach issue? But you hit the nail on the head, that our residents would be getting, would be paying twice, and that's not equitable or fair. So, I'm not saying no to a letter, but I don't know that it needs to go to the whole council, because he made it clear, like I said, that this was, this was him, not the council. But not saying something says something.
Thank you. Commissioner Kent, and Deputy Mayor Persis.
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Selby, but I think it would be the polite thing to do, would be to write a letter back, you know, from all of us, if we're all in agreement. Just let him know that, you know, we don't feel comfortable with that, and explain why. You know, very short and very sweet. That would be my opinion.
Thank you. And Commissioner Littleton.
Sure, if it's the will, we can write a letter. But I'm against this, given the money. So, if we send a letter or don't send a letter, I'm not too worried about it.
And I, I agree, the, it sets kind of a bad precedent. So, any project that Echo or Forever does, if the adjacent city doesn't contribute, then it doesn't happen? Is that, is that what we're talking about? It does make our residents pay twice. I don't know, for all the previous Volusia Forever purchases, none of which benefited directly the northeast part of the county, did those communities pay to make that happen? Kind of a pay-for-play situation, like we're being asked to do here. And it's tax dollars. It's our residents' tax dollars. So, that's $100,000 that doesn't go to pay for a $1 million fire truck, or doesn't hire a new police officer or firefighter. There's all these competing needs for our tax dollars, and that buffer up there is, by all accounts, already a huge buffer. So, to make it even bigger, that's a question, I think, for Echo and Volusia Forever to consider if they want to do that. I kind of like Commissioner Kent's thought on the letter, just letting it, you know, if you don't have anything nice to say, don't say anything at all. I almost think that's the best, the best approach. So, I mean, it sounds like it's three to two to write the letter. Is that something that the commission's comfortable with, the city manager responding to him on, with the commission's position, or?
I just think something very brief, that, you know, we received a letter, and I just don't want him to say, "I wrote a letter to Ormond Beach, and they never responded." I don't think that looks good either. So, I think just a short, little paragraph, your letter was received, but we decline, we decline, you know, your request. Thank you for your correspondence, and, you know, see you soon.
Well, I think, you know, and maybe the, maybe the, I like brevity in pretty much everything, other than when I'm talking, I guess.
Be positive, be brief, and be gone, right?
But, you know, in his letter, he says no general funds will be used to make, you know, he wouldn't support any county general funds being used. We can say the same thing. We don't support any, that's why we created, that's why the residents of the entire county created Echo and Forever, is to do projects like this. So, we, thanks, but no thanks. We're not going to use any general funds.
Very good. Can you come up with something, Joyce? I'm happy to sign it on behalf of the commission, or however.
That's okay with the commission. Okay, you, and I will just, I'll agree.
Is everybody okay with that? Along the lines of what Commissioner Selby and Commissioner Persis indicated? Okay. Very good.
And then, I just wanted to say good evening to Jeff, Stacy, and Shannon, for, they sat through the entire meeting. We're excited about your new store on North US-1. It's going to be great. There's a lot of residents, a lot of activity happening up in that area, and you guys are going to do great up there. And you're already doing, I mean, I love going to that store.
Me, too.
I mean, you know, the amount of merchandise, and the quality of the employees, and the help, it's fantastic. So, just wish you the absolute best in this project, and, you know, hang in there, because dealing with government, that's, you know, it's not always super easy.
We're great to work with you.
Oh, no, I didn't mean Ormond Beach. I meant DOT, and, you know, county, and then Bike Week, the first responders, the Fire Department, and the Police Department. Thank you, guys. And please let all the guys on the road know what a great job everybody's doing there under stressful situations. And finally, on a personal note, we found out tonight that my younger son, Kyle, who is the father of twin girls, Kelly's pregnant, and they're going to have another girl.
Yay!
So, there'll be three girls on that side, and my older son, Brett, has a daughter and a son. So, we'll have our fifth grandchild, four to one, girls to boys. So, we're excited about it.
That's the way the world is.
That's right.
That's right. They're everywhere.
Thank you, Commissioner, and congratulations.
Thank you.
I'll be brief in my closing comments. Joe Daniels, it's great to see you. And I think it is, you were here maybe a month ago, maybe six weeks ago, but it's always good to see you at these meetings, and, or around town anywhere, is a pleasure. So, thank you for coming tonight. I had the honor last Thursday of surprising Coach Hill, along with our city staff, at the Nova Recreation Center for 45 years with the city of Ormond Beach. And he was there like he is every single day, just working hard and doing what he does. He told me, and I was really lucky, I felt, to have a little time talking to him, but he told me that, you know, when you're a teacher, you have a curriculum, and there's certain things that you have to do in that classroom, which Commissioner Kent and Commissioner Persis know all too well. But he said when he would come after that to work for the city, he could create his own curriculum and activities, and teach the kids things that he thought were important, and that were fun to do, to help them blow off steam. So, it was awesome to see him. Nobody really does that anymore, as far as our younger generation stays in one job, even for 30 years. That used to be the plan. You know, you'd get a job, and you'd keep it forever. Now, I think every four to seven years, people are moving, job to job to job. So, we are lucky to have him. He's a great asset to the city, and I just want to congratulate him on that. Colby, everybody said it perfectly, and I was going to point out, you know, when Joyce tells me that she comes here on a Saturday at 10:00 in the morning, and you're here organizing and pulling things out, and putting things in proper order, the city clerk's office, that's how you know you had a great employee, and we did. I've got the carrying case for that key to the city, and then an extra copy of the proclamation. Maybe you can send it to your mom. Don't leave, don't leave without that, and we're going to miss you. So, thank you, and with that, we'll say good night.